Keep it dry.
I didn't think about it.
Keep it dry.
Sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Definitely fifty-seven.
Five thousand.
Fifty-seven.
Been a week today, so. But you can do the initial.
Nope, it's time. All right, it's time for a tax rate hearing. Do we have anyone who would like to speak about the tax rate?
We haven't had anyone sign up.
All right. With that, now I call this meeting the order of the regular meeting of August regular meeting of the Osage County R two school board. Welcome all our guests. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor raise your hand. Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. We didn't have anybody sign up for open forum either?
We did not, sir.
That's disappointing. All right, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor raise your hand. Opposed, the same. All right, do we need to approve the sublists and some of this stuff or have I done that by?
That is all in the consent agenda.
Yeah. I'm not concerned. All that stuff on there. All right, any discussion on transfer and payment abilities? The Hilliard bill looked really hefty. Is that like the bill for the year?
It's a big one. This is our big Hilliard bill.
The big Hilliard bill?
We order most of what we need to operate for the year. This time of the year.
Okay. All right.
Was there any expected bills between June and now?
Nothing that was atypical, just typical operating bills. We had a few repairs, HVAC, that type of thing, but I would love to say that those were more atypical, but we do quite a bit of HVAC repair.
Like we paid what, three hundred and thirty-five thousand on the new addition to the contractor?
Yeah, we'll see some unusually high spending in that sense, but typical for what we're doing.
Yep. All right, can I get a motion to approve the transfer and payment of bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer and payment of bills.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Carry on, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor raise your hand. Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Reports. We're gonna do, we're gonna start out a little bit different this time. We're gonna start out with a, I think it's probably, it might be a nice thing to do for the August meeting every year, so this is my suggestion. So we're gonna start out with a state of the district report.
Well, I'm going to stick to a scripted report, so honestly, that we save a little bit of time.
That'll save a lot of time.
It will. So good evening, members of the board. And guests, also known as Mr. Hunt. It's my honor tonight to share with you the state of the district. Over the past several years, Lynn's schools have moved steadily forward. We are stronger academically, athletically, organizationally, and the core of that progress is a staff committed to students, families who believe in us, and a community that has stood behind our schools. At the heart of our achievements is a cultural shift. If you walk through our hallways today, and I mean today, you will notice a new energy. Staff collaborating, professional development is focused on students and learning. Classrooms, where teachers are trying fresh approaches to engage our learners. Even our most veteran educators are stepping outside their comfort zones to improve instruction. While at the elementary level, our phonics gaps are closing significantly, and a new math curriculum is making content more accessible. Our growth shows up in classrooms, on playing fields, and across every corner of the district. Wildcat athletes are not only winning games, but leading in the classroom with volleyball posting a varsity GPA of three point nine nine five and softball being named the number one academic team in the state. Meanwhile, volleyball brought home its first ever conference championship. Softball balances that out with advances in back-to-back Final Four appearances, and football recorded its very first varsity win and now boasts its largest roster in program history. That same spirit of achievement extends well beyond athletics. Band and choir are growing in both size and quantity, quality. Our theater program is flourishing and our student clubs are continuing to grow and multiply with student-led initiatives like a new sign language club. Elementary students are stepping into leadership roles as greeters, and our FFA chapter just continues to excel at competitions. From kindergarten to high school, seniors signing college scholarships, Lynn's students are demonstrating that excellence comes in many forms. At the same time, our special education team is identifying needs earlier than ever, supporting students more consistently, and seeing remarkable growth in our youngest learners. The academic improvements are not just accidents. They are the direct results of staff dedication and the structures we have built, a digital curriculum, data-driven collaboration, and a district-wide focus on student growth. Our community partnerships have also been central to our success. From the boosters and PTO to local businesses, state tech, volunteers, and donors have helped us make visible improvements to our facilities and grounds. Inside our schools, preventative maintenance systems have shifted our work from reactive to proactive, and custodial teams are more organized and effective than ever. In food service, staff are serving healthier, more homestyle meals involving students in menu planning and making lunch a positive daily experience. These things may seem small, but together they create schools that students and families are proud to call home. As a district, we're on solid ground. The first time in years, we are fully staffed. Our budget is balanced, our audits reflect efficiency and smart planning, and our financial rating is A plus. Enrollment is climbing with more than twenty tuition-paying students choosing to attend here and about ten or twelve new enrollees. And perhaps most importantly, our culture and climate are strong. We're attracting staff who want to be here while negative influences have naturally moved on. All of that in tandem with facility improvements that stretch across the district, its campuses and programs. Our middle school students will leave the basement next year after fifty years in a space that was not originally intended to be inhabited by students, and sixth through twelfth grade will enjoy an enlarged and improved facility. Our parking lots will be extended, upgraded, and well-lit and secured. By the end of this year, we will have replaced in the last three years, a track, a football field, replaced dugouts and backstop at the softball and baseball fields, field event activities, shot put, long jump, the pits, discus, and we will have solved most of the drainage and van infrastructure issues, some of which have persisted for years and a few for decades. The list is in reality too long for this venue and too long for me to memorize. It has happened fast with a great deal of help from partners across the district and community. But even with all this progress, we must keep our eyes on the challenges ahead. The most significant is staff compensation. Our current base salary is thirty-seven thousand, below the state's new minimum of forty thousand, which will be forty-one thousand two hundred next year. By law, that base will rise by three percent annually, annually reaching over forty-five thousand by the year 2030. While we are financially strong today, this mandate will place increasing pressure on our budget. We cannot simply aim to meet the minimum when it arrives. We must plan now to meet or exceed the base salary by the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh school year, not just because legislation requires it, but because our students deserve the very best educators. And we cannot build quality schools or outstanding citizens without attracting and retaining top talent. So tonight, I'm proud to say the state of the district is strong, stronger than it's been in many years, but our story is not finished and neither is the hard work. The road ahead will require careful planning, continued community support, and a shared belief in the potential of our students. So thank you tonight for your support and your continued faith as we keep progressing through the work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's good to step back and talk about all the great things that have been happening in the district every now and then. We oftentimes hear it at each board meeting, and you don't really realize how much is going on until you really do put it into one big package. So speaking for myself, I'm super impressed with all the great things going on in the district. You walk through open house, just the condition of the facilities and just hearing the students, talking to the instructors and administrators, and just hearing the relationship with our students having in a small district like ours makes me very proud to be on the school board. Anybody else have any comments?
Our number one focus will be academics, 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 academics. What I really don't want is a but statement. All these things are great, but I don't want anybody to be able to say about our kids, yeah, but they're not as strong in math or they're not as strong in reading. We're gonna get rid of all those but statements and really bear down on the quality of our instruction in the classrooms and what we expect to increase our student achievement. I think that's the primary component and an absolutely mandatory component in really hitting that next level of good to great.
Very good. No more buts. All right, I like it. All right, I do appreciate. I couldn't help it, no, but a hundred percent agree. All right, this doesn't seem fair to bring Amy up here before she hears the other reports, but.
I'll do it.
Welcome to the, I know we met in the small session last month, but I think this is your first time in front of us, so welcome to the district.
Thanks. You guys ready? Okay, so you guys know me, Amy Kimmna, special ed director, assistant elementary principal here. Just a little bit about the special ed department's mission and goals for this year. I came up with one for me, one for our staff, and one for our students. So for me, I'm gonna focus on continuing to update 504's and IEP to make sure that we're staying within compliance of state laws and regulations throughout this year. My staff is going to improve the way we are running our day-to-day processes and notifying parents, teachers, and other staff members. We're working on a good way of communication and how to get all of our paperwork and stuff, numbers, all of our deadlines into one easy place that we can all see. And for our students, we're gonna continue to challenge them each and every day to improve within their goal set within their IEPs. My staff, for the most part, this year is staying the same. I have Sueann Bauer is the lead pre-K with Joan Gones and Debbie Prater beside her. Tanya Sousa will be at K two. She currently has Brooke Gates, Gabrielle Brouche, Broshu.
Broshu.
Zoe Moore, and we're hoping to add at least one more para, and I'm going to stress that least. She is in a high-needs classroom. We've had a lot of move-ins, so we need a few more hands on deck. Hannah Wilbers will be majority three-five. Shelby Kemper is going to stay at the junior high level. Emma Schaefer is brand-new this year. She's going to split junior high, high school, and she is also coming down and doing some hours with Tanya in elementary. Tasha Hoslog is working with high school resource. Tasha, Emma, and Shelby are all sharing Tammy Rutgers, Christine Kramer, and Jordan Gates for para support, and I do have an amendment to what I had sent in to Chelsea. I forgot Michelle Mosley, how I don't know. She's the brains behind this whole thing. She is the process coordinator and SLP here. As of the eighteenth, we currently have forty-two kids in elementary with IEPs. In 504's middle school, we have twenty-one, in high school, we have fifteen. Last year, you guys completed tier monitoring. At this time, I've not heard anything back from Destiny on what that looks like. We're still waiting to hear back from that. Just some things coming down from states as far as compliance and regulation. If you haven't heard, the state is currently closing the schools for severely disabled. This is scary for most of us in this bed world. While it's not directly impacting us right now, future effects could be. It could be harder to get kids into those as there is not going to be as many of those open for us to get kids into. The YCDD is changing. That is a plan that is used primarily for kids up to age three. That is now going to be extended for them to use those plans up until first grade. It does help us as far as we don't have to get all of those IEPs done right at the beginning of kindergarten at five. It gives us a little bit more time to collect some data on those kiddos. So in my opinion, that's not a bad change. Right now, there's no state plan yet, so if anybody hears, please share because we don't know right now. We typically have standards and indicators in the summer, and we know what to prepare for, and we have not gotten anything at this point. And nobody is a hundred percent sure what's gonna happen at the federal level with IDA with the Department of Education being disbursed. In conclusion, I'm here for a great first year. I have a great staff, a strong staff, and I'm excited about it. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Summer school.
Good evening. Okay, this is gonna be short and speed. It was a really good summer session. I felt like things really went well. Our enrollment numbers were a little bit down by the end, a little bit lower than what we would have liked to see. We started out with two-hundred-and-eighty-seven kids by the end of summer school. We were at two-fifty-six. We kind of tried to keep up with them as to why students may have dropped, but ultimately a lot decided they wanted to stay home or with grandparents. There were a lot of summer camps going on, so some kids came for the first two weeks and then out the last two weeks they had summer camps to go to, so then that kind of contributed to some of those. We did have several students in the credit recovery and took advantage of that. And then overall, discipline went really well this year. I felt like kids were really good into their routines and procedures, and it just kind of continued and was an extension of our regular school year. So we did not lose any students due to behavior reasons. And then overall, again, it just went really well. The students did a great job of exploring and learning, even through the summer and the fun curriculum, and teachers really did a good job of supporting students, but also being consistent with those expectations, so everything went smoothly. You guys have any questions?
Nope. Very much. Pretender for.
I'll try and be very, a great first week back. PD went really well with staff, had a great grand opening. Shout out to our PTO for the grand opening for the new playground. That went very well. Energy and collaboration and in-service was very good. We'll have our typical, probably our first big one out at our house will be in January. I do intend for that culture and climate, two groups I'm gonna be reaching out to in the fall because I'm interested in seeing how welcome we are as campuses and districts is our newest teachers and our newest students. I want them to feel immediately at home and feel like we pull them in very actively. And so that's two groups that I intend to survey a little bit and interact with, just to see how well are we integrating you into our staff? How welcome do you feel? Have we given you everything you need? Do you feel supported? But I also want that for kids. You know, I really want every new kid that comes to our district to feel like not just they arrived and somebody noticed them, but we grabbed them and pulled them in and we immediately made them a part of great groups. Staffing up at one update, we will look at at least one para in closed session. Based on some of our moves in, they are not transfers. I thought that might be a question, but just regular moves and move-ins, we have about a dozen of them. We are likely to need another para, and we have an unusually large first grade class. Right now, they're about twenty-one, twenty-two on average, and that's a little large for a first grade class. So we'll talk about this in closed session also, but I'd like to hire an aide to help those two first grade teachers. We don't quite have enough to hire a whole other first teacher, but we do have enough that we could use a little bit of help with those higher classroom numbers. One of our first graders is a transfer student. Professional development, been talking, and I reached out to a few colleagues in Texas for curriculum audit training, and I'm gonna at least wanna send Erin and Kami to that or bring somebody back here. But essentially, what they do is they audit our curriculum through the written, taught, and tested, find where our gaps are, take a look at the quality of our instruction, and really get us very detailed, pinpoint, focused on where we can improve. We had some strong achievement data at the elementary with mostly positive data at the secondary level, struggled a little bit with our math scores there at the secondary level. We had a significant jump forward last year of about twenty points, and then we slid back, so that's something that our high school is taking a look at. We have M six six, M six six, cycle two, that will be participating in this year. Campus has looked great. Somebody asked me earlier, said, hey, what do you do when somebody says that you just care about how things look? Which I do care about how things look, but not for the same reason they suspect. I want when people look at our campus to see pride and ownership. I don't care what they see. I don't think it's important that we have anything fancy or new. Pride and ownership is a thing. Taxes come out before you feed your family, and we should show the return on that investment. And so, yes, weeds matter, rocks matter. I care whether cones are crushed or not because I want our students to see that pride and ownership in our community. Of particular importance outside of everything else we've got going on, this realization, our van is over a hundred thousand, our truck is well over a hundred thousand, and our car is at ninety-five thousand miles, so they're gonna start giving us problems here in the next couple of years. This is a way out for me, like a wait, look down the road. Athletics and fine arts, fall sports are in full swing. You've seen our feeder pattern out there taking pictures tonight. That looks really great. Meet the Wildcats will be on the twenty-fifth there in Wildcat Stadium, and that's, again, building on that culture and the climate and getting all of our fall sports, almost kind of a fall pep rally, if you will. We're gonna find ways to engage our community. Working on the cross-country course, band is having an alumni pep band at Homecoming on October third. I'll be sitting up there. If anybody here or listening has played in the Wildcat band, come on out. We're gonna find a way to get you an instrument. Budget and finance, it's a bit like a fifteen-year roof. It seems like you just replaced it, but a fifteen-year roof, you need to start thinking about replacing it again. So there are gonna be some things that I talked about to you guys about ad nauseam. Our ASBR ending fund balance was thirty-five point three, about two percent better than what I predicted, not knowing how our end-of-year funding was gonna go. Our assessed valuation went up to ninety-six million. That's a fourteen point two percent increase. We'll talk a little bit about this at tax rate later, but there are some things that come into play when you're a minimum operating levy school district that actually gave us an advantage this year. We're gonna get to roll up when if we were even a dime more, we would not, and so we'll have some kind of one-time money. Our ADA will go up this year, not because of our tuition kids, but because we're gonna be up about a dozen or so kids to start the year out. We're also receiving about twenty-six thousand dollars in tuition. I'm keeping a close eye on that. I wanna know what those kids cost us versus what we have, and so far, we're running a surplus there. We'll talk about this a little later in closed session also. Some changes in minimum wage laws means that we'll be adjusting some staff members up above that new minimum wage, beginning in January twenty-six, twenty-seven. And we're, actually, we have calculated the cost to that. It's about fifty-five hundred dollars in total through the whole year to get everybody above board, but since that's come along with legislation, since we passed our budget, this coming year, we're gonna have to adjust our certified staff schedules to make sure that they line up with that new minimum wage that now applies to us. So look for those things to be coming our way. We'll talk about construction here in a minute, so I'll save you the construction update.
Questions? All right, ASBR?
ASBR, like I said, we're at thirty-five point three percent to end the year. Last year, we had a few more. You know, you're always trying to predict what that last, those funding deposits are from the state, and they came in with a hundred percent of our formula payment, so we ended up about two percent over, which means between that and our AV going up this year, we will run a surplus budget this year. Not a lot to solve our minimum base salary, but I'll take it nonetheless. So we went from a very slight deficit budget. We're actually gonna run a surplus budget this year that'll help prepare us to take a strong look at a significant jump to our base salary going into twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Very good. Second reading policy sixty-one eighty.
Yes, sir. That is our English language learner's policy, fairly straightforward, based on providing our families with the application regardless of whether they request it or not. Just a few, I've left it the same as our first reading.
Any questions? First reading of policy twenty-six fifty-six.
Twenty-six fifty-six, we'll have to go back to seven point one. But I was a little off there. We missed bond projects. But twenty-six fifty-six is cell phone policy, and so that is the MCE policy update that we typically get, so I just copied that and took their recommendation. Our procedures and our student handbook are already in line with that. I did separate it out, honestly, going into this board meeting, thinking that it would be a far more contentious thing, but it's actually been, it's went along pretty well. I think our students are doing an excellent job with little to no issues.
That's great.
It is. I'm happy.
Seven point one bond project summary.
Update, yeah. Please report that we are on schedule. There is one item that is behind, but our net schedule is, we'll still have a substantial completion date of June nineteenth and then turn over to owner being us thirty days after that. We do have a few kind of hanging chads that are near completion. Our secure vestibule for the elementary is waiting on a couple pieces for that, the northwest parking lot. The light pole heads, some of them have arrived, but not all of them. We have some minor landscaping. That's about it. RTUs will be coming in around the November, December timeframe for the cooling system for the fieldhouse.
How did the, when that big rain hit last week? How did the drain do in front of there?
Really, really well. So where they swelled that old, the old sidewalk there, about the first third of it that always pooled a little bit, went outside of the swell and into the rocks, about twelve inches, but as it kind of came around that corner, it pulled back to the center of the swell, and all of it went right out that swell. It worked perfectly, actually. Our one issue with that is we had so much water. Now that we're getting the water off of that elevation, it is coming off the back of that hillside, and it looked like white water coming out of. The football field never pooled or pond even once. I was really surprised. The area between the track and the baseball field where we put that French drain in, never pooled at all, but we had enough that it looked like white water coming off of that, I think it's an eighteen-inch or twenty-four-inch pipe coming out. So we've been working down there today. In the last couple of days, we're gonna put in a couple of culverts to get that off of the hillside to control erosion and also steer clear of our cross-country course, because right now, it's just obliterating that valley that goes through. So we had about sixty feet of culvert delivered today, and Cliff and I, and Colby Peters is helping out, build some culverts and passovers through there, so we'll be ready for our cross-country.
Well, not often you get an inch and a half of rain in thirty minutes.
It was the most rain that I've seen.
Yeah.
I also, for cross-country, talked to a gentleman today in New Haven, bought about three hundred feet of used turf, and that'll be delivered Saturday morning. So we'll cover the new, I call it the patio where the rocks used to be, because it's all pad or patio thick. We'll cover that in that used turf all the way out through to the long jump pits, so it should work out pretty well for us.
Nice. Very good. Referring to MUC policy update.
So there is a lot in those policy updates. I think we have English, from the cell phone policy, active shooter and safety training, discipline policy, there's a lot in there. I can go through them individually, or if you have any questions on anything specifically. I can go through them individually or if you have any questions on anything specifically, we can focus our conversations on them. All of them were rewritten by MCE policy.
Anybody have any questions? No questions. Approval of bus routes?
Uh, we did have some ridership issues because of our enrollment. However, uh, those have slicked out and we've changed our ridership. We're gonna maintain the same bus routes. We just moved the kids around. Uh, in particular, for instance, uh, we had quite a few kids, uh, move over to Old Highway fifty down towards Hostlog Energy Locksmill over there. And it just overloaded a couple of our, our buses. And so we had to swap some buses out and move a few kids around. Uh, after day two, that sorted itself out pretty well and we're, we're gonna roll with our, our previously existing routes.
Very good. Approval of propane bid?
That was, uh-
Oh, I need to vote on that or we need to vote on that. Can I get a motion to approve the bus routes?
I'll make a motion to approve the bus routes.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor approve the bus routes, raise your hand. Both the same? Motion carries. Approval of propane bid?
We solicited bids from seven propane providers that serve our area. Two companies submitted. Locksmill Propane and Double A Propane, which is our existing service provider. Uh, Locksmill Propane came in at a dollar twenty-four per gallon and was the lowest qualified bid. Double A Propane, propane came in at a dollar thirty-five per gallon. Uh, while Double A did provide a staffing bid as well, we found out very many people utilized it because a lot of our folks are too far east to actually participate in propane delivery. And so we didn't have a lot of participation there, uh, to give our, our folks an advantage. Unlike last year, they didn't offer the same rate for our staff either. Last year it was the same. This year there was about a thirty cent difference. So I, I sincerely doubt, uh, any of our folks would use it anyway. So I would recommend that we go with Locksmill Propane at a dollar twenty-four per gallon as the lowest qualified bid.
Can I get a motion to approve Locksmill Propane at a double twenty-four?
I'll move to approve Locksmill's-
Locksmill propane at twenty-four. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor raise your hand. Opposed, the same?
It's a good price.
Very good price.
No kidding?
Cause I, I think I saw the county, there was something in the paper about one of the government entities. And I think their rate was like about ninety-four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ryan just texted me Monday, you know, when it is, when it did-
Who's due Tuesday?
Okay. Well, he just texted me Monday. It's like, I think it's out now, so.
All right, good deal. Approval of Missouri compliance plan?
Our, uh, program compliance plan is provided by the state, has been for years. It is a, uh, highly qualified document and has served districts across the state of Missouri very well. In lieu of us creating our own, we adopt the Missouri compliance plan each year as presented in the link.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the Missouri compliance plan?
I'll make a motion to approve the Missouri compliance plan.
Can I get a second? Second. Discussion. All of those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, the same? Set tuition rate?
Uh, as I, as I spoke earlier, I actually thought we had quite a few, not quite a few, several of our students that were gonna be tuitioned that actually got lucky enough to find residence in our district. So my original estimate was around just a little bit over thirty thousand in, uh, tuition that we were receiving for this year and ended up being twenty-six thousand. So we currently charge two thousand for the first student and five hundred to each additional student with an average home value of just over two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand. Our residents for any amount of students pay about sixteen-hundred-and-fifty dollars depending on where they landed, that two-hundred-and-fifty-five. So at two thousand for the first student, we are paying more than about seventy-eight percent of our current residents. And if you have two children, you're paying just short of ninety percent in the ninetieth percentile when compared to resident contributions to, uh, school funding. It's working for us so far. I will say that we need to pay particular attention for a couple of reasons that kinda surprised me if I'm being honest. Uh, because you really got, you wanna make sure your return on investment is good. And I, and I would look to you guys to tell me, I'm gonna give you the numbers, but you have to provide the value, right? Because if, if we break even, is that what we're looking for? If we make money, so to speak, is that what we're looking for? Uh, we have a couple of different trends. Elementary, uh, in particular at the kindergarten level. Folks that are coming to us wanna come and spend their entire thirteen years with us. Education, that is the most common narrative that we're getting at that kindergarten level. The second is programming, so we tend to be hit up. I think we have maybe about four, four or five students that are freshmen that are tuition-paying students. I think we have one senior, one junior and four, maybe five freshmen. Uh, so that's another area. If we start to load up that ninth grade and our class sizes go too high. Uh, we're paying particular interest at the elementary because again, we're right on the verge. Where if we go three teachers, then we have class sizes of twelve and fourteen. Or we stay two teachers and we have class sizes of seventeen and eighteen. And then those younger grade levels, seventeen and eighteen is a lot of kids. You know, really K one and two, tell me if I'm wrong, you guys are much more experienced than I am. But I look in those classrooms and I, I would rather have less than more. And so we've really gotta pay close attention to the interests that our, our tuition rate garners over the coming years to make sure that we're not taking on, uh, too much responsibility for our tuition. As it stands now, I think it's creating a surplus.
So we don't have to have teachers? I think we do all right on it.
All right, so what is the tuition rate?
Two thousand for the first student and five hundred each additional.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the tuition rate?
I'll make a motion to approve the tuition rate twenty-point-five, twenty-point-six.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor raise your hand. Opposed, the same? Motion passes. ME fee ordinance notice?
I did you all a disservice last year by forgetting to get this on the agenda? By us, our adopting this, we establish in-house auditing for, uh, any, uh, misappropriation of funds or conflict of interest. So in that ordinance that was attached to your notes, you agree that should you be in a position where you have a conflict of interest, you would abstain from the vote. You would divulge if you're proper profiting or some part or entity that you're involved with is profiting from the district. What that does however, is relieve you of the obligation to file an individual, much more detailed personal financial disclosure every year. So if we adopt this, we agree to self-govern and that includes you. The, the vast majority of that responsibility is on board members. But you also don't have to jump through those hoops and get the email and try and click the link and tell them about your, your finances.
Okay, we don't have to file with the Missouri Ethics Commission?
Exactly, if we adopt this.
Okay. Well, I have to, I don't really care, but just to spell this out, this is the Missouri Ethics Commission.
Yes, sir.
But we do have to file. You don't care if it's taken-
You do want to file.
It's ten hundred per day.
Do we have to file anymore or just not? We don't have to do anything if we pass this?
If we pass this, I'll submit it'll be on file and they will not even solicit you until next year. We will adopt this for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So about next, next fall, if we choose not to do this shortly after that, all of you will receive a notice that you have to do a PFD. Unless we, they give us the option, which is highly likely again, then we can adopt it to self-govern or we could go ahead and do the PFD. It's really changing the onus of responsibility for conflicts of interest from the state level to the local level, with the state level being much more detail-oriented and meticulous and the local lever, level being much more general and self-governing.
But it also puts the school more at risk, right? If we're not-
If we don't adhere to it.
Sure. So if we don't, we don't do this, can we just file like we have?
Do you just file like you have? Yes, sir.
I don't have problems with that. I mean, it almost seems like, uh, having outside oversight might be-
They don't actually oversight anything though. I mean, it's, I, I would agree, it's definitely- All you do is hit the button that says repeat from last year.
Our audit is the real mechanism there. Quite a, our audit's gonna catch if we're not complying with any of the Missouri Ethics Commission rules. If there's any impropriety in finances.
I've had a number of board members, not many, I've had a board member who consistently year after year forgets to file it and then has to deal with a fifty-dollar a day fine. I mean, that's the reason I'm all for.
Oh, no, it takes ten dollars a day.
Ten dollars a day. I mean, it's a daily, it's a daily fine. So if you forget about it for a month, it does add up. For that reason, I'm okay with.
Is there, with self-governing then, how's that, um, how's that oversight?
So I ha, I'm gonna have to govern our side if I begin writing you as individuals or you as representatives of any entity, checks that would suggest a conflict of interest in an area that you will vote on. So if you can vote, say a contract in and, uh, Andy's got a trucking company, right? So if it's a votable contract, then I've got to be the gatekeeper in terms of writing that check to Andy, check to an Andy's LLC or whatever it is. Doesn't mean we can't do that, but the moment that we would do business with anything related to any of you, we would need to keep that on file and show that we were, we ran our finances according to state law and local policy so that we still went out to bid if we needed to. We still took the lowest qualified bidder and that type of thing.
And the reality is, the Missouri Ethics Commission is never gonna know their own.
I agree with you.
It's gonna have to be on the bottom.
It, it would have to be someone reporting that. They're not gonna find it on their own. Now, don't get me wrong, we should be reporting that. We should be doing clean business that makes our district proud of how we operate.
Further discussion? All right, this may be the longest item of the night. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the MEC ordinance notice?
I'll make a motion to approve the MEC ordinance notice.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand? Opposed, the same? All right, all clear? Approval of the tax levy?
As I mentioned earlier, uh, our initial reported AV last year was eighty-four million. After correction, it was near to eighty-seven million. This year, our assessed valuation in total for, uh, is ninety-five million, nine-hundred-ninety-one-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars. So just short of ninety-six million dollars. That's a fourteen point two percent increase. Typically, the Hancock Amendment would say, wait a minute, it protects school districts from receiving less funds. So if real estate values or personal property goes down, we can't collect less than we did last year. So it keeps us level, but it also protects the homeowner in a sense. So that it can't be increased by more than five percent. Here is where we fall into an interesting little gray area. Because we were already the minimum tax rate, when the AV goes up, we should hit a five percent limiter. And that limiter would tell us we need to roll our assessed value or we need to roll our tax rate backwards. In this case, to two dollars and sixty-eight cents. However, two dollars and sixty-eight cents is against the law. We cannot adopt that. So by law, we, even though we technically should roll back, we have to at least roll up to two dollars and seventy-five cents. So we get to collect the initial five percent that would have been Hancock Amendment protected. But then we get to collect the gap between what we have to roll up in two dollars and seventy-five cents, which results in quite a bit above what our anticipated local taxes were gonna be. It's about three-hundred thousand dollars. Now, that is only gonna occur in years where you have a minimum tax levy and you have a massive leap forward in assessed valuation. So that's not a leap forward in advantage that we're gonna continue to experience. And so our average over the last ten years, about a decade, is two point eight percent. And I typically project and anticipate a two percent on average increase when I do the budget. My first year I did one percent comp. Honestly, I was a little bit nervous about it. So we're getting some extra, some extra money this year. Uh, but we don't have a choice. By law, we have to at least adopt two dollars and seventy-five cents. And we cannot without a vote adopt anything higher than that for our operating levy. So by law, we would adopt two dollars and seventy-five cent operating levy and we would maintain our, our dollar five on the debt service side. I gave you guys quite a bit of information there because I thought, uh, that might be a little confusing. We did have seven point eight-six percent in new revenues just from reassessment. Our county office has been busy. R-three is experienced, similar, and so has R-one. It's allowed, R-one really gave them some breathing room to, cause they were almost at the state's maximum levy. Uh, now I think they're just over five dollars, maybe five dollars and a fraction of a penny.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the tax levy?
I'll make a motion to approve the tax levy.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on the approval of tax levy? All right, hearing none. All those in favor raise your hand? Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Tax levy is approved. Seven fifteen, that's not bad. Uh, next regular meeting of the Osage County R-two school district will be September eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five. I get a motion to adjourn to closed session?
I move we adjourn to closed session in percent to RSMO six-ten-point-two-one ASD subsections relative to personnel, personally identifiable employment information, personnel actions, personal, personally identifiable student information, legal actions involving a public body or privileged communications among that body and its representatives and attorneys, slash attorneys.
Very good. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
We'll call a vote. Ryan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Naomi?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.